December Board Meeting, I'm Dale Hurst. I'd like to call the meeting of the Madisonville Consolidated Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Jason, would you open this?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we're just ever so grateful the day that you've given us. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today to conduct the business of our wonderful school. Dear Lord, we just thank you for the wonderful children that we have in our district as well as their parents and all the families involved. And also our teachers and staff and how they are really one of the most important parts of the school district. Dear Lord, we just pray that you'll be with the board as we make the decisions for the betterment of the school in your name as well. And we just pray that everyone will be safe during this Christmas season and we just pray that everyone will remember the true meaning of Christmas and celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
It is that time of year, you know, everyone's kind of getting ready to get the holidays started, but there's so many great things that are taking place, you know, here at each of our campuses between now and December the 19th. So, and this is one of those things. I mean, we're certainly glad that you're here this evening. The best thing that we get to do is to honor and recognize outstanding students and staff. And we certainly have an outstanding group here to honor tonight. The, I would like to start with, and they wouldn't stick their head in here, but our ag department provided the meal tonight for our board. That's where we were list a few minutes late. You know, slipping in here, we're really, really, they would not come in. They're sitting there in the hallway. But we're really, really thankful that they chose to do that for our board. They took a substantial number of kids that qualified for the state championships that took place in the Fall LD Eagle event this past Friday and Saturday at Sam Houston. And we had many of the different kids and groups who really performed well. It's very, very hard, you know, to advance when you, when you play for a state championship in a sport. You know, you're playing based on your enrollment, right? I mean, you're divided into classifications and you're playing for that state championship and amongst schools that are in somewhat, somewhat your size. When you go to the state championships there, you're competing against everybody, private schools and all points in between from 1A to 6A. So it is very intense competition. And when you have as many kids in groups that get to go and represent our community, that's a blessing and it's something that doesn't just happen. Our teachers there, Ms. Foster, Mr. Foster, Ms. Bobber, Mr. Barrett worked very hard and we're really proud of those kids. And again, we appreciate their participation in the meeting tonight. So with that, let's talk about our students and staff. On this eighth day of December, 2025, the Madisonville Consolidated Independent School District Board of Trustees would like to recognize our Students of the Month for Academic Achievement, Outstanding Character, Effort, and Responsibility. Let it be known and let the minutes reflect that the Madisonville CISD Board of Trustees appreciates these students and their parents for what they do for our school. It is truly an honor to present each of you with this award. And you're certainly due congratulations. So Dr. Brooks, we got one of my old friends here this evening. Why don't we talk about his young man?
Madisonville Elementary School is very happy to have Hannibal Craig Jr. represent us as the Student of the Month for December. Hannibal is a first grader student in Miss Ashley Lawless's class. His parents are Lenisha and Hannibal Craig Senior. Ms. Lawless says that Hannibal is a joy to have in the classroom. He's always willing to help others when they're in need, and he is a mad rock star. Mrs. Daniel, his reading teacher, says that Hannibal is a very intelligent young man. Hannibal loves to learn and he comes to school every day with an excellent attitude. Hannibal enjoys school and playing with his friends, and he says that his favorite thing to play is Minecraft. Hannibal, we're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Dr. Nell? Good evening. Our third grader of the month is Israel Fortham. He is a third grader at Madisonville Intermediate School and his teachers are Miss Harrison, Miss Malinak, and Miss Richard. And they hold this really in the highest regards and have the following to say about why he deserves this honor. They, it's hard to put into words what an amazing student he is. His sweet smile and caring heart light up the room. He truly has a heart for serving. He is always willing to assist his teachers, help other students, and displays honorable character at all times. He is hardworking and exhibits the drive to complete difficult tasks. He enjoys a challenge and is always the first to celebrate the victories of others. He maintains a positive attitude and gets 110%. Outside of the classroom, he enjoys playing sports like soccer and football, and he is a true leader in every sense of the word. He sets it a candle for all of us to follow and is a joy to have in the classroom. Congratulations.
Mr. Dean?
It's my distinct honor to announce Madison Junior High School's selection for the Student of the Month is Brandon Brenner. She's the daughter of Joey and Ashley, which are also employed in Madison CIC at the junior high. Joey's my AP and Mac or Miss Brenner is the English teacher. Brandon was selected not just for our academic achievement or the incredible character she displays every single day. When she's asked her teacher to describe, a clear theme emerged, integrity, kindness, and leadership. One teacher describes Brandon as a prime example of the student who does the right thing all the time, even when the teacher's not looking. She takes her classroom seriously, refusing to take shortcuts. Brandon is studious and consistently puts forth her best effort. Demonstrating excellence in everything she does. Ms. Zinner added that Brandon is a student who gives 100% in everything she does and takes pride in her work. Beyond her strong work ethic, it is Brandon's heart that truly sets her apart. Ms. Reese told us that if she could ball out sunshine, it would be great. She is described as a classroom cheerleader who treats everyone with respect, patience, and love. This duly noted that she leads by example and brightens her classroom with her positive attitude. This leadership often happens quietly. Ms. Lyon shared a wonderful story about how Brandon helps classmates who are struggling or who have been absent. Without being asked, Brandon will just slide over to their desks and help them find their work, ensuring that they don't feel overwhelmed or left behind. Whenever she's offered to sweep the classroom floor or organize a classmate's backpack, her empathy is always on display. Coach Burke summed it up perfectly. Your kindness, responsibility, and willingness to help others make you a true role model. Thank you for being a positive light in our classroom. Brandon loves to play softball for the grind, and in the future she wants to become a pediatric nurse. He did not have a certain quote when we were talking today, and I said, well, let me give you one. How will you lead determines how will you succeed. Brandon, for your hard work, your willing heart, and the joy you bring to Madison Junior High, we are proud of you and you, Student of the Month.
Shepherd?
It is an honor to recognize Cheyenne Doge as the Student of the Month for Madisonville High School. She is dedicated and compassionate senior at MHS. And Cheyenne is the daughter of Tammy and Joel Doge and is known campus-wide for her kindness, her strong work ethic, and her heart for serving others. Cheyenne plans to attend Talton State University to pursue her career as a pediatric registered nurse. Her dream is to work at Texas Children's Hospital in the Woodlands, where she hopes to make a difference in the lives of young patients and their families. She has already taken major steps toward her future career, completing night college classes, earning her CNA. And now she's finishing her phlebotomy course with licensing exams on the horizon. And she took my blood the other day. She did an awesome job. I let her. Oh, it's very funny. Her passion for nursing group from her time working with the nursing home and her desire to help people during their most vulnerable moments. At MHS, Cheyenne has been involved in cheerleading, Beta Club, FFA, and 4H. Beyond school, she's deeply committed to her church and community, consistently stepping in to serve, setting up events, providing meals, or simply just helping someone carry items to their car. Cheyenne says the most important thing to her in her life is God, and she credits her accomplishments to his guidance and blessing. Cheyenne is admired not only for her service, but also for her outstanding character in the classroom. Her government teacher, Coach Forkfield, shared Cheyenne is a sweet young lady who comes to class prepared every day and works diligently on her assignments. She comes to class with a smile and is a very organized young lady. Congrats on the honor, he said. Her math teacher, Coach Campbell, added Cheyenne is one of the hardest-working and respectable students this year. She always comes to class prepared and eager to learn and stays engaged in group discussions and interacts with her group to help her understand the material. She is a bright squad and a joy to have in class. And he knows that her hard work and determination, she will be very successful in the future. And Ms. Taylor, her English teacher, noted Cheyenne is a perfect candidate for this award. She is caring and compassionate to her fellow classmates. She always is helpful and willing to help others. As a matter of fact, students refer to her as antique. And the term of endearment represents how special she is, and it's a joy to have her in her class. So Cheyenne Doge is a shining example of leadership, service, and compassionate MHS, and we are proud to celebrate her as our December Student of the Month.
Here.
I'm gonna have you upside that way just a little bit, okay? There you go, just a little bit. No, you're good. Cheyenne, scoot towards Brandon just a little. Brandon, there you go. Are y'all ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
I'd like to recognize our Employees of the Month at this time. The faculty and staff at their respective campuses nominate and vote on this recognition. The fact that it is voted on by their peers truly makes it an honor. In this month, we have our staff from the intermediate. So, Dr. Nell, tell us who we get to honor.
Beth Par and Miss Ashley Gerhart make their way to the front, ladies. Beth Par, you may remember seeing not too long ago as our Teacher of the Month, and she has been honored again because she transitioned from the general ed classroom into a new inclusion role. And she has jumped in with remarkable dedication and heart. Beth consistently seeks out strategies to help support struggling learners and extends her help to all students, not just those on her caseload. Because she understands the demands on the classroom teachers, she offers support that goes far beyond what is expected. She collaborates and steps in whenever is needed, and she offers to lighten the load for others whenever possible. Her colleagues describe her as knowledgeable, kind, and someone who always gives 110%, even while learning a new position. All it is, she doesn't look like she's learning a new position. She's a pride. Most importantly, Beth builds strong, caring relationships to ensure that every student feels valued and capable. Her commitment and compassion make her truly deserving of the recognition. So, Beth, we're so proud of you and so thankful that you're part of our team. Good job. And our Employee of the Month is our counselor, Ms. Ashley Gerhart. Ashley has been with the district for 17 years. She was in the classroom in fourth grade and fifth grade, and then also in inclusion for a couple of years, and she's been our counselor for the last five years. So tonight, it's an honor to recognize her for the tireless work that she puts in sometimes behind the scenes. She is one of those hidden gems whose impact is felt everywhere, even if it's not always seen out in the front. No matter how many questions she gets asked, she never gives anybody that side eye. But she is always supportive and helpful and really goes above and beyond, not just for our students, but for our staff, and she is truly appreciated. The enormous caseload and workload that she carries to help our school run smoothly does not go unnoticed by us. She is capable, compassionate, and a powerful example of what it looks like to be a MSA. We are grateful for your dedication, and you are truly deserving of this recognition.
Oh, the wheel of that chair. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
I'll tell you the thing that you heard there with both of those, and they're both truly outstanding, but the thing you heard was behind the scenes. They are both classic examples of what you build your campus around. And they may not always be the ones that you notice first, but they're both shiny examples of those who make things happen, and they're truly outstanding and great choice, Dr. Nell, Mr. Clary, for the intermediate this month. Appreciate that very much. Public comments and yeah.
We have any public comments this month? If not.
Unless you would like to primarily stay for quite some time this evening and enjoy some Educational Outcome Board Training that's going to start here in a little bit. You're more than welcome to have a great evening at this time. Let's go ahead and we'll go ahead and do it because I don't think she's gonna make it. She texted me earlier and said it didn't.
I think Keith is gonna go ahead and kick off superintendent's reports.
I will do the business report. We do have an abbreviated version tonight. Ms. Terry is at jury duty even as we speak. That has been quite an exhausting day, I think, for them, but she is still there. So I'm going to do an abbreviated version of the business report, and then she will fill in a couple of the blanks in January. There were some things that we needed based on our local revenue that we had not been able to get yet for this meeting anyway. So there are a couple of slides that we would normally have that we weren't able to put together yet. So I will go through what we do have, and then again, Ms. Terry will fill in a couple of those blanks in January with the, basically with the report that shows where we are at this point in the school year as it relates to our percentages of revenue that we've taken in and percentage of our budget that we have used at this point. She will have that for December and January. What you see there, their first slide is just the, as we most always do, we remind you of what the budget that was approved as well as our tax rate information. In November, we did receive a $1.8 million foundation school payment. And then, you know, that is our schedule of payments. You'll notice that, you know, for the next four months, I mean, we're not expecting a check from the state. However, that'll pick back up in the spring and eventually it will be, you know, very near the revenue that we budgeted for from a state aid standpoint. By the time the year fiscal year ends in August, so we're still on track based on those schedule of payments. Again, this will be our final state aid payment for a few months until April. So it was a little bit more than what we anticipated, but always remember that fluctuates a bit, you know, from check to check, so to speak. So it is going to change a little bit this spring to where there's going to be beginning in April and more of a every six week settle-up process that will begin, you know, typically the big settle-up based on your ADA and your payments happens in September. That process is changing with House Bill 2, and that will begin in earnest in the spring and then will be full-fledged next year. So kind of the way the state pays you, your state aid is going to be changing a little bit. So we look to that in the spring as well. There are our top checks for November. Most of those are very, very standard. I mean, we have the big check there for Durham. And then the only one that is somewhat, somewhat different than what we would normally have are thejourney.com, those headphones, those are used for student testing across grade and subject levels. Tailpass, for example, you know, which is what we, our language learners are tested. Use headsets so they can both hear and speak, you know, as part of those assessments. So we did need to upgrade those and we were able to do that through journey.com. Otherwise, those are very standard type purchases. Any question about those? And again, we will have the slides as it relates to where we are in relation to our budget. We'll have those for you in January. And we'll go from there. Any questions about the business? Go straight into facilities. Yeah, we've discussed for the last couple of months, the work that we felt like we needed to do to replace the high school PA system. We did the week before Thanksgiving. We had our bids were submitted that Tuesday. We had three bids for that project. One was from a company called Wasiga that does PA system, security systems, that type of thing. The other was from Digital Communications, which is a Houston-based company that have a lot of different solutions. And the other one was from KLC Video Security out of Tex Arcana. We put together a group. It was myself, technology, business, high school, and maintenance. And we looked at those bids and we selected KLC Video Security from Tex Arcana to do that project. After visiting with them on multiple occasions in the lead-up to that decision, we got a little bit more comfortable every time with them and their product. It is a different product. It is more network-based than the old systems that are completely 100% hardwired. So there was a little bit of value there for us. We feel like that in Region 6. And they were very, very aggressive in wanting our business. So we're really excited to work with them. We processed, as you recall, you gave me the authority to accept that bid, you know, in November. So we actually produced the purchase order for that on the Friday before we got out. They have began ordering materials and knock on wood, we hope to start Thursday with the installation on that. If they get the wiring, I believe it's a type of wiring that they can begin to run, you know, through the building where wires are necessary. We hope to be able to start that on Thursday. Timeline-wise, they won't commit to being able to have it completely finished when the kids come back from the holidays, but they feel like that it will be soon thereafter. And once they get in and get started and have a chance to really get their hands in there, we'll have a better sense of that. But based on everything we've seen from them to this point, I fully expect that to be the truth. I think soon after that we get the kids back in January, we'll have Ms. Shepherd, we'll have a bell ringing, you know, as our hope. So again, very excited to work with them. We hope that this is a long-term partnership and, you know, there may be some other ways they can help us, you know, as we begin to evaluate some of our needs. So very excited to get to work with KLC on that project.
Gordon, you've got two.
I do.
Agenda items.
Well, House Bill 2 is the gift that keeps on giving. Legislative session. It did, and it calls for districts to come up with a plan, which we will bring back to the board in January. We have provided a draft for you just to kind of look at, but it does require districts to come up with a plan or uncertified teachers to become certified by a given date. It's not, it's not really an issue for us because we are not a district that has a DOI, which is the District of Innovation Plan that covers uncertified teachers in foundational curriculum. that covers uncertified teachers in foundational curriculum courses. We don't do that. So we're good there. But as a proactive measure, we are going ahead and we are creating a plan just so we can be in compliance with this section of House Bill Two. We'll talk more about that in January. Any questions right now, though? The next is PIA. Just a quick update about that. PIA is rocking along. You do have a little thing on your screen. I was keeping up with Kelly and said that she's not here. I was keeping up with her.
I think she's.
But PIA is rocking along. We have had three different sessions where the team has come in from Region Six and they have met with our, our team. We have conducted two different calibration walks. Our administrative teams are doing great on the campuses as far as being aligned. We've conducted a number of surveys and so our staff has been contributing to what our plan is going to be. And we are in the works right now as far as building our build guide. And we hope to have our field guide, fingers crossed, before Christmas, but definitely by January. And then we'll present our build guide to our team and then once our team approves it, then we'll come to the board and we'll go to our staff and then once it's approved there, then we'll go to the application and that's due by. A little more nicely. You have questions about PIA that I may be able to answer.
Just to, so like those tiers.
Yes.
You know, I'm saying essentially it's going to take you three years for tier one to go. So then do you, you start? Is there simultaneous tiers going on?
Yes. So, so right now we're in the application year for tier one. And tier one, we're looking at the four through eight star subjects, the reading. And the reason why we're doing that is because we have a measurable unit. And so next year would be our data capture year, provided our application is approved. And if we're in data capture, then then we'll be working on the tier two application.
Here. Here, three, you're not going to have to wait six years.
Yeah, we, we hope for it to, you know, just.
Yeah, I'm just thinking morale of all the teachers, you know, getting the opportunity to at least try.
Yes. And, you know, we've been trying to really communicate with them as far as the reason why the different groups are going in the way they are because none of it's easy, but the first group that's going in is going to be the easiest to get the data. The last group that's going in is by far going to be the most difficult for us to get.
Thank you for quantifying that. That was very helpful. All the data that you had, the metrics that you used. So appreciate that report. Anybody else? Okay. Well, we'll move into business with the financial. The timing of things not being fully completed, we only have one actionable item. That, of course, being the minutes from last meeting. I think everybody's had time to review those, any corrections or revisions. Not on entertain a motion. That one from Jason. Second from Bo, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that. Yeah, with that, we do have a couple of brief things that we need to go into a closed meeting. The board will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following item listed in our agenda this evening as allowed by the Texas Government Code, Section 551. Point zero seven four personnel. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take place as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. It is now 6:06 PM. will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. It is now six oh six P M. Motion for Mike and a second from Quincy. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, this time, we have a training that we'll be adjourning into, so that concludes our meeting.